Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley on October 5th, 2021. I now call the special presentations meeting to order at 5:30 PM. The special presentations will start with, actually, we have three special presentations. One is the commendation recognizing the Riverside Sheriff's Department and the Moreno Valley Fire Department. The second one, recognizing Fire Prevention Week. And then the third one, recognizing October as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. So we'll start with the first one. I will go ahead and present the commendation recognizing the Moreno Valley Sheriff's Deputies and Moreno Valley Fire Department. Okay, and I think they're bringing some people in? Okay. So tonight, we honor and recognize honestly Moreno Valley's finest. It's my pleasure, yes, absolutely.[134.16][134.16](APPLAUSE). It's my pleasure, as the city mayor, to present the Moreno Valley Sheriff's deputies and the fire department with a commendation recognizing their heroic, the heroic acts on August 8th, 2021. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief John Salisbury if you could please join me, representing the Moreno Valley Sheriff's Department, and also Fire Chief Jesse Park, if you can please join me representing the firefighters on that day, and also Councilmember Ulysses Cabrera, if you could also please join me as well. So, I would also now like to ask for the deputies that were there that evening. We have Sergeant Joseph Fitzgerald, if you could please join us. Sergeant Dustin Goats, if you could please join us. Deputy Mario Chappell, if you could please join us. Deputy Nico Sandoval. Deputy Jonathan Glass. And Deputy Bradley Bowdre as well. Let's give them a round of applause.[211.48][211.48](APPLAUSE). You know, without regard for their personal safety, these deputies before you, right here, they entered a home engulfed in flames and smoke. Deputies and victims did sustain injuries during this event requiring medical aid. The City of Moreno Valley and the City Council is grateful to these heroic deputies, as well as the brave Moreno Valley firefighters that quickly extinguished the fire. On behalf of the council and the citizens of Moreno Valley, I want to thank you for your quick thinking, for your tireless training, and your heroic acts. When we first heard about what happened that early morning, we were shocked, and we were glad to hear, though, that many of you were okay and receiving treatment. And we were just so thankful, to be honest, of your ability to just go in there and do whatever it took to really help. So, I'd like to present these certificates with Ulysses Cabrera. The first one is to Sergeant Joseph Fitzgerald.[286.27][286.27](APPLAUSE). We also have Sergeant Dustin Goats as well.[300.02][300.02](APPLAUSE). We have Deputy Mario Chappell. Deputy Nico Sandoval.[318.27][318.27](APPLAUSE). Deputy Jonathan Glass.[326.66][326.66](APPLAUSE). And then we have a commendation for the Moreno Valley Sheriff's Department, and this goes to the entire Moreno Valley Sheriff's Department that's there. So I'd like to ask Chief Salisbury if you would be willing to accept it?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.[358.31][358.31](APPLAUSE).
And then, we also have a commendation proclamation for the fire department as well, and thank you, Chief, for accepting it already. Thank you, appreciate it.[372.31][372.31](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sir.
And I just want to read what some of these proclamations read, by the way, because I think it's important. It says, "Whereas on August 8th, 2021, the Riverside County Sheriff's deputies were the first to arrive on the scene of a single-story family house fire. And whereas Riverside County Sheriff's deputies entered the burning building to help rescue the occupants despite the residents being engulfed in flames and filled with smoke. And whereas Riverside County Sheriff's deputies bravely entered the burning structure and were able to rescue two residents out of the structure and locate a third. And whereas Riverside County Sheriff's deputies disregarded their own safety during an extremely difficult period and were responsible for saving lives. And whereas Riverside County Sheriff's deputies continued to show they live by the law enforcement motto of 'to protect and to serve'. And whereas Riverside County Sheriff's deputies and staff perform heroic acts daily keeping our community service, the community safe so that, so that individuals may have liberty and flourish. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Moreno Valley do hereby commend these Riverside County Sheriff deputies for their service." Let's give them a round of applause.[456.16][456.16](APPLAUSE). At this time, I'd like to ask maybe Chief Salisbury if you'd like to say a few words, or Chief, Fire Chief, if you want to.
I think we're good.
You're good? Okay. So if we could just maybe get a group photo?
Yes, absolutely.
Let's do two rows and four folks on the second step, and everyone else in the front.
Is it dollars?
Yeah.
I don't mind this.
There we go.
A few more folks in the back.
There we go.
Catch you on the second step.
Second step, yeah?
Oh, no.
There we go.
There we go.
Looking good, smile.
We'll do a couple.
Any more photos, folks? Anymore? No, I mean, I'm not, I'm not being a procedure. If you need, take a photo, take a photo, please. This is for you guys, and these guys. Okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. (APPLAUSE).
Okay, we'll give them just a second here. And that will conclude our first presentation for tonight, and we're going to move into our second of the third for this evening. For the second presentation, we are actually issuing a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week here in Moreno Valley. This is an annual occurrence wherein the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley and the Moreno Valley Fire Department partner with the National Fire Protection Association to raise awareness of the importance of preventing fires and knowing what to do in the event of a fire. While there has been a drastic reduction in the occurrence of home fires in the past 30 years, there is still much work to do. The theme of this year's Fire Prevention Week is Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety. Plan and Practice Your Escape. The theme encompasses a comprehensive approach to fire safety in the home, from taking preventative measures to remaining vigilant to the dangers of fire by having a plan of action in the event of an emergency. Such steps and actions greatly reduce the occurrence of injury or death as a result of a fire. The Moreno Valley Fire Department has many great resources for learning about fire safety and for spreading awareness of the importance of installing smoke detectors in your home. And so, in partnership with the Moreno Valley Fire Department, and with the common goal of keeping our residents safe, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley hereby issues the following proclamation. Whereas the City of Moreno Valley is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city. And whereas properly working smoke alarms reduce the risk of loss of life in reported home fires by 50%. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. And the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme encourages residents to look for places fires could start and take a proactive action to protect against fire, to listen for the sound of a smoke alarm and act quickly, to reach a pre-designated safe meeting place, and to learn two ways out of every room. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of our citizens and staff, does hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th of 2021 as Fire Prevention Week throughout our community. All of the people of Moreno Valley are urged to take a proactive role in fire safety in their homes and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Moreno Valley's fire and emergency services throughout the year. And here tonight to accept this proclamation is Moreno Valley's Fire Marshal Doug Bloom. Doug, would you like to share a few words?[713.87][713.87](APPLAUSE).
I just want to say thank you to Councilman Cabrera, Mayor, Council, for your support for Fire Prevention Week and for the Fire Prevention Proclamation. We know that education is a key component to fire safety, and that with the education we can try to do our best to prevent fires, and where we can, we need to know the sounds of fire safety, implement our evacuation plan to keep us safe. Thank you.[746.31][746.31](APPLAUSE).
We'll take a few pictures here.
Taller folks on the second step back there?
Can I have you two take it from a little taller?
That's good there.
Go.
All right. Step a little bit this direction. There you go.
Me?
Yeah, you're good, you're good. All right, there you go. All right. Take a couple.
I think Valiecia wants a picture.
Thank you, guys.[765.13][765.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is now the Down Syndrome Awareness Month, and this is very special to me as well, and to many folks that are here tonight as well. The City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, you know, we celebrate the abilities and accomplishments of all people, and especially folks with Down Syndrome as well. For the month of October, Moreno Valley does recognize that people with Down Syndrome are defined by their own strengths, abilities, and inherent value, not by their disability. This is something that I was able to see as well as a school teacher, special education teacher, for 14 years. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Priscilla Ayub to please, and her family, to please join me right behind here, if you could.
I'm going to read part of the proclamation here, which we have right here, and it says that whereas approximately 1 in every 700 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing an estimated 6,000 births per year in the United States, and whereas there are over 400,000 individuals living with Down Syndrome in the United States, and whereas Down Syndrome is the most frequently occurring chromosomal disorder and is a leading cause of intellectual and developmental delay in the US and in the world. And whereas while research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected, more investigation is needed into the causes and treatment of Down Syndrome. And whereas possessing a wide range of abilities, people with Down Syndrome are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles within our communities. And whereas the City of Moreno Valley recognizes people with Down Syndrome are defined by their own strengths, abilities, and inherent value, not by their disability. And whereas individuals with Down Syndrome should have equal opportunity to achieve the universally designed goals of self-fulfillment, pride in their achievements, inclusion in their communities, and reaching their fullest potential. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council, on behalf of its mayor, I mean, its residents and staff, does hereby proclaim October as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Mrs. Ayub, would you care to share a few words?
First of all, I would love to thank the City of Moreno Valley just for being involved with our community. We know that every time we've asked for our mountain to be lit up blue and yellow, you guys are more than welcome to do it. I also want to thank my family for being here, for being such great supporters, and just, I've spoken to Councilman Cabrera several times regarding Down Syndrome, and just getting some events going for our special needs community, and he's always been more than welcome, more than welcoming, and just help, happy to help us. So thank you so much, and thank you so much, Mayor, for this big opportunity and such a big blessing for our special needs community, the Down Syndrome community, and for our family, the Ayub family, that has been part of Moreno Valley for several years. Thank you so much. Oh, we also got this little goody bag for you. Yes, it was for you. Let me give this to her.
She is two.
All right, here we go. Get big smiles from everyone?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like I mentioned, it really is true that people with Down Syndrome are defined by their own strengths and abilities and their value, not the disability. At this time, that does conclude our special presentations. We will go ahead and start the meeting in about a couple minutes.
Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City as successor agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this regular City Council meeting to order at 6:03 PM on October 5th, 2021. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by myself, and then we're going to be starting an invocation, by the way, at the next meeting. So if you could please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Marquez?
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Here.
That the record reflect, Mayor Pro Tembaca is absent.
Okay, staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockismati, City Clerk.
Stephen Quintanilla, interim city attorney.
Mike Lee, City Manager.
Brian Mohan, Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Michael Lloyd, Public Works Director, City Engineer.
Manya Moncha, Community Development Director.
John Salisbury, Chief of Police.
Jesse Park, Fire Chief.
Thank you. At this time, there's been a request, and this kind of goes to the public hearing and also to the council members as well. There's been a request by the developer of F1 to continue that item to the October 19th City Council meeting. I guess the developer received more comments and wants extra time to respond to those. Is there, just want to ask the council if you're okay with moving that to October 19th? Okay. So we'll go ahead and continue that to October 19th as the hearing is open, right? We don't have to...
Open the public hearing.
Okay, so I opened the public hearing, and we're going to continue that meet, the meeting F1 to October 19th?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, did you want to take a vote?
Yeah, you should be, take a vote, or if there's a consensus.
Because, because this is a hearing item, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Who makes the motion and second?
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
Oh, I think it has it on, just go, I mean, she'll correct it, right? Okay, okay.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez?
Yes.
Motion passes, three ayes.
Okay. So just to clarify, the item, F1, has been continued to the October 19th meeting, and that's at the request of the developer.
Need to check to see if he has.
So again, that was the industrial building, the plot plan project for the 98,000 square foot light industrial building. So that's been continued to the October 19th meeting at the developer's request.
Thank you, Mayor.
So there should be three members on Zoom, I heard, or at least I have on my list here as three members, is that correct? Four members, okay. So just to let the members on Zoom know that F1 has been continued to October 19th. Okay, so now we're going to do public comments on agenda items and non-agenda items, and so we'll go ahead and I'm going to ask the city clerk, how many speakers we have?
Right now, we have one on Zoom, and three, four in person.
Okay. We'll go ahead and call those speakers, and then again, it's not for F1, okay? So this is just for items on the agenda and non-agenda items. Okay? Who are the first three speakers, Madam Clerk?
Carly, Kathy?
Cory, Kathy?
Carly, Kathy?
Carly, Kathy?
And Fred Bañuelos?
And Robert Palomares.
Okay, if you can please come up to the podium?
Carly is on Zoom.
Okay, Carly, if you're on Zoom, you can go ahead and start.
Hi, yes, my concern was with F1, so, I'm sorry, you said that was, that's going to be moved to October 19?
19. Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'll save that for then.
Okay, thank you, Carly.
Yeah.
Okay, next one is...
Fred Bañuelos?
Robert Palomares?
And Angel, Angel López Ramírez.
Okay, good evening.
Hello. My name is Fred Bañuelos, and I'm here to talk about Measure G. Staff and council members approve Measure G, and now Measure G will go up for vote by the residents of Moreno Valley. 66% of our roads are in despair... 66% of our roads are in despair, and I agree that our roads need to be fixed, but this Moreno Valley resident will be voting no on Measure G. Councilmember Cabrera is for it, but he isn't cheerleading to tax the residents. He said we either do it or the money goes somewhere else. Councilmember Marquez says we need to step it up. We can't count on the state for that SB1 money because of what's going on. He doesn't trust the state and neither do I. He says let's take care of ourselves in Moreno Valley. I have friends that live in Riverside and they shop in Moreno Valley because of the lower sales tax. We need to take care of ourselves by letting our border cities know that it's cheaper to shop in Moreno Valley. Now, prior to SB1, we were paying taxes to fix our roads. We should have roads made out of gold by now, but they took that money and used it for other things. The problem with SB1 is that the state isn't giving us our money that we pay into it. Now, Moreno Valley residents pay car registration. I just paid my car registration fee and I paid an extra $110 for SB1 transportation improvement fee. Nowhere on my renewal notice did it tell me how much extra I'm paying for this tax. It's kind of like they want to hide that. I also paid an extra vehicle licensing fee, $53, and the VLF fee goes to my city for things like public safety. Now, every time a Moreno Valley resident gets gas, they're paying an extra 51 cents per gallon for SB1. That money should come back here to Moreno Valley. And let's not forget my property tax, that's also supposed to come back to my city. Now, there are four things that SB1 money was used for in Moreno Valley. Citywide Slurry Seal Project and Citywide Payment Rehab Program are two things. They're giving us some of our money back with, but with 66% of our roads in despair, we need all of our money. There are also two programs for Juan Batista, De Anza Trail. I like trails, but why are we using that SB1 money for this? SB1 was sold for roads and bridges. Now, this is where I need your help and the help of Moreno Valley residents. We need to march up onto Assemblymember Medina and State Senator Ross's office and demand our SB1 money. We already pay enough taxes to fix Moreno Valley roads. It's our money, we need it to come back to our city. Moreno Valley first. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bob Palomares?
Yes.
Followed by Angel?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Congratulations, Chief, to your men and women, both fire and police. Very honorable people, very, very proud of this police department and fire for what they do every day. And I heard on the IE Newswire about Corey Jackson making a statement about taking police officers out of our school campuses here in Moreno Valley. That's a dangerous move. Right after he makes that statement, a few days, I believe after, a young lady was found with a weapon on her and disarmed by PD, so... Case is, is if we were to have those police officers removed from campuses, what could have happened? You know, to be a tragedy. So also, Councilman Cabrera made a statement prior about defunding our police department. That's two no-no's. You know, that's, either, I think you're, made that statement out of emotion and not common sense. So you need to get behind the badge or get out of the way. Because, you know, we need to increase, not decrease. We need to fund, not defund. And you want to be mayor? Not going to work. You know, you're supposed to protect the citizens, that's the oath you took. And that includes police department and fire. So get on the right page. And for you, Mr. Marquez, I'm still waiting for your attorney to call me. But I know at the end, when you make your console closing comments, you'll come out with a 14-carat lie.
Speaker, please. Angel Lopez.
Followed by Luis Palomares.
Restart it right now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Cabrera, Councilmember Marquez, members of the staff, members of the public. My name is Angel Lopez Ramirez, candidate for City Council, District 2. And certainly, thank you for tabling F1 tonight until October 19th to allow for more public comments. And part of the reason why I'm here tonight also was to speak on that matter. However, now, I'm just going straight to my comments on the non-agenda items. Folks in the community in District 2, speaking to senior citizens and veterans, they are concerned because they are being left behind. This is a vulnerable population in our community, our elders, and many of them are concerned because of the rising cost of housing. Many cannot live, excuse me, many cannot afford to get their own housing because the cost is too high. And this is for senior citizens, many of whom were forced to move in back with their sons or daughters to at least have a place to live or somewhere to rent with either family members or friends, so they have a place to live. Also with many of our veterans in their community, many are becoming vulnerable as well to that effect. So I urge the council in the future, for future matters, let's look at housing development, affordable housing for senior citizens and our veterans who are fast becoming a vulnerable population. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, members of the public and members of the staff.
Thank you, Angel.
Last speaker, Luis Palomares.
Excuse me, Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, I agree with what Bob said. Thank you, firemen, police, keeping our city safe. Also, I wanted to talk about this, I'm in the 2nd district, so I want to talk about this piece that came out, the swamps in there. We got the ex-bank robber, Ladonna, we got Marcus, the liar up there, leading the charge. He's been in recall tense, but he said nah, uh-uh, he has. Then we got Carrie Then, wow, you know, saying about keeping our ethical, keep this, keep everything ethical, that's what she has here. Ethics, ethics, what ethics? When she has Ladonna in her bandwagon here. Ethics, come on. Cabrera, also, wonder boy here. He's going all over the city like he's the mayor. Give me a break. Campaigning, throwing names around, oh, I was here with Mikey Garcia, I was there with Mikey Garcia, really, really, really? I don't think he's supporting you, I've talked to him. So I doubt that, I've talked to people that know him, but anyway. So how to, and protect our property values, she puts it, just a lot of hogwash. Our property values are through the roof. We can't even buy a piece of property here. They'll come down eventually, but they're through the roof. They're building a lot of housing coming up, that's great for our city. Mayor, you're doing a darn good job, we're going to hate to lose you if you win that seat over there, but wow, you'll take care of business for us in that arena. Thank you so much. But it, it's really a joke, you got all the liars' club here. These are your friends, this is the picture they all took together, the swamp, the swamp, the liars. Ladonna, Carrie Then. Oh, and she has all the unions right here, about half a dozen unions. She's against jobs, she don't support unions. Hey, our police have a union, our firemen have a union. What? You know, ethics, she's lying to these people, she got their endorsements, but if you straight out ask her, she don't support unions or jobs. She wants to take us back to Egypt. She wants to take us back 40 years. They don't want anything but horses and horse crap here. It's a sad day in Moreno Valley. If that lady gets that seat, we're going backwards, we're going to be back on the Titanic. Right now, we're going full force forward and wow, because of our mayor and our staff and Carla, Dr. Carla Thornton and Victoria, Pro Tem Victoria Baca, I don't know about these two, you're all in bed together. You jumped ship, you jumped off the ship, Cabrera, you're all in bed with this guy. And the Ladonnas, wow, and they all come in the name of God, give me a break. Uh-uh, don't hide behind that, I'm a Christian. I am too, saved by grace, a sinner saved by grace, but I'm out there in the highways and the byways, no matter how many stones are throwing me, because I'm stating the facts and the truth here. But this is the liars' club right here, wow, look at it good, this is who you're all in bed with, Cabrera.
Thank you. Okay, any more?
No more speakers.
Okay. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendar, Sections A through E on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar, Sections A, B, C, D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be recorded by the City Clerk. At this time, are there any items that you would like pooled? If you please press your request to speak, Councilmember Marquez?
Yes, A4, just for recognition.
A4? Okay.
Ms. Valerie Sanchez in the audience?
I don't think she's here. Oh, she is, oh, there she is, okay.
Ever come up?
Oh, come on. You just want to recognize, okay. Oh, what, to...
That's fine, right there.
Yeah.
Valerie, I want to say thank you for applying, congratulations on your appointment. We need, we need youth like yourself to get interested in the city and help us move forward. So for me, and I believe for my council, my council members here and my colleagues, thank you, congratulations.
Yeah.
Can we give her a round of applause?
Okay, any other items?
Nothing else.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by myself, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Madam Clerk, please call for the vote. Okay, this one person, okay, there we go. Okay, and it's approved, three aye? All right. Okay, that takes us to F2. Actually, no, it takes us straight to reports. So we'll go... I'll go ahead and speak on behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Baca for the March Joint Powers Commission meeting held on September 22nd. The commission heard a report by Southern California Gas on their commitment to net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2045. She also reported that there was an update on the Meridian Park development as well. And then finally, the March Joint Powers approved an amended truck route ordinance that channels trucks away from residential areas in Riverside and Moreno Valley. That concludes the report to the recent March Joint Powers Commission. And then we have the Western Riverside Council of Government. I'll go ahead and give that report on her behalf. The Executive Committee recommended that WR COG staff begin work on a transportation uniform mitigation fee, which is basically the Tump Nexus Study. And then the Tump program, just so you know, relies on a Nexus Study to draw a connection between the needs of the program and the Tump program fee. And the last update was completed in 2017, so they're going to do another update on that. That concludes that report. We have, we have a report from Councilmember Marquez from the Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. Items covered at the RCA Board of Directors meeting on October 4th includes Moreno Valley's MSHCP fees collection total $114,642, and that includes 35 residential permits for the month of September. And that number is going to start increasing as we continue with homes out here, building homes. And as one of the speakers said, we need more affordable housing. It's coming, it's coming. It just takes time when these developers decide they want to build. And from the time that, that my colleagues and I talked to them, to the time they actually dig up dirt, it takes about a year and a half sometimes, but it is coming. So just bear with us and we'll have, we'll have enough homes here for more residents. That's, that's it, thank you.
Great, all right. That brings us to the City Managers' report.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, I just have three items tonight. There was a speaker that was asking about the SB1 money. Just for clarification purposes, the city will receive close to $4 million a year of SB1 money, and that money is actually allocated by the state, it's based on population, it's a very strict formula. And the city needs about $250 million worth of...
Deferred maintenance to, to help our streets, so just for a point of clarification on that one. The second item is, I just want to commend the mayor and city council. Two weeks ago, you guys all went up to Sacramento for the League of Calver, League of Calver City's event. There was an item that was very controversial for, for the cities. This is something that we were working on for the past two months, and it was a resolution by some of the cities to try to take away tax dollars from, from cities such as ours. And we started with a, with a network of 14 cities, but it was more of a David and Goliath item. And you guys were up there, you guys did your magic and talked to a lot of your other colleagues, other mayors, other city council members. And when the vote came, we were able to turn that around. So congratulations to all your hard work, the team effort, and really convincing the other cities that, that we should protect our local money where it belongs. Third item is, I just want to also thank the mayor and city council. The last council meeting, you approved the, the Mobile Safer Program, and we're happy to announce the launch of that program. This program allows any Moreno Valley resident to come and pick up free smoke detectors. And the beautiful thing about this item is that this, as a result of the mayor and city council outreach to a lot of our businesses, all the smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide detectors were actually donated from our large company. So we have received close to 1,400 units, and a lot of our residents are coming to City Hall to pick up the smoke detectors also. So thank you for your support for that program, and we have a successful launch of that program. That concludes the City Manager's presentation tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll go ahead and brings us to the reports and comments from council members who did not speak earlier. You will have five minutes for the closing comments, and we'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to start off with the dinner that we had Friday night, but I believe my colleague Cabrera will, will speak on that, so I'll let him do it on the dinner. Moreno Beach Drive, Overpass Bridge, construction started. Make sure when you're driving that area at night that you obey all signs. The lighting is going to be very, very hard to see anybody out there, so just pass the word. Be careful driving in that area at, at night, we don't want nobody to get hurt. As our city manager said, we attended the conference Sacramento this week, or last week, on the League of Cities. I met, I met a gentleman. It's kind of, kind of strange. He didn't look like a council member, he didn't look like an elected official, but I did explain to him about what I felt, what I thought, and he thought it was funny. But he sent me a letter, I got a letter from him this week, saying thank you for your help in guiding me through the conference. And that person was the mayor of City of Commerce. This gentleman, he, unbelievable, he, he knew what he was talking about. I mean, he lost his job as an employee of the city years ago, came back, he never gave up, came back, got his job back, and he ran for mayor, well, he ran for council, won, became mayor, and the gentleman, and the individuals that terminated him at one council meeting, he awarded them with the Employee of the Month. So that, that, that was, that was something else for him to talk about that. He, he thought that bygones would be bygones and let it go, and it was. But he was also one of the mayors that did not understand what we were talking about, the taxes for fulfillment centers, Amazon, e-commerce, where the taxes went to sales tax. He had no clue. After speaking to him for about an hour, he started to spread the word with me to these other small cities that had no clue. Now, you got to understand, we want the sale tax to stay here with our two fulfillment centers. You're talking about millions and millions of dollars. But there's cities like Rancho Cucamonga can't, can't build anymore because they're built out, and they can't get no fulfillment centers, and they, they feel they should get part of the sales tax. Well, they do get part of the sales tax, but they wouldn't tell you that. They get it through the county, county shares up everything they get from sales tax for the county, not per city. We want to keep it here, we want local control. And when it came to the vote, originally, when I first got there, it was like, what was it, Mike? Five of us to 50 of them. And when we went to vote, at the end of the day, it was overwhelmingly 99.9% to oppose that, and we're keeping our sales tax. So it was hard work, but we did it, we spread the word and, and we did it. I want to talk about a commercial... Um, I want to talk about a commercial police patrol. I've been getting a lot of inquiries on our second unit. We get more warehouses, more homes built, the homes, I'm not worried about, but it's commercial. We're having trucks driving out of route in residential areas. And my concern is this, need another patrol, commercial patrol unit. So I'm gonna ask, and I've been getting different stories, but I'm gonna ask a City Manager and Police Chief, what's the status on that unit? Mike?
At this time right now, because of the shortage of the chips and, uh, the supplies, um, the providers unable to fill the order for us in all the other cities that was part of the, 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 the initial purchase.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Chief, is it possible, since we have, I believe, three commercial officers? Do we have three commercial officers on staff?
That's correct, Councilman.
Is it possible to borrow commercial unit from the county?
Uh, to my knowledge, the county hasn't purchased any commercial enforcement vehicles. Uh, that's just not a, a thing that the Sheriff's Department normally engages in outside of our contract partners.
Okay, I just want to let the public hear that from you guys, so. And with that being said, I want to wish everybody a nice evening, and I also want to welcome our new poli, our Fire Chief, Mr. Parks, Chief Parks. Welcome, thank you.
Okay, uh, we have, uh, closing comments, uh, thank you, Councilmember Marquez. We have closing comments from, uh, Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, want to start this, everyone, it's good to be back here again on the dais. Uh, congratulations as well, Chief Park, welcome, uh, to the team. It's a, a pleasure to have you here, and it's nice to meet you, uh, for the first time today, so, uh, you know, whatever we can do to help you and your team, please let us know, we're more than happy to do that. Um, and so, uh, second, I would just want to address some of the comments that were made by some of the members of the public. Uh, just flat-out lying about me being in favor of defunding the police. Uh, that's, that's what they do, you know, they twist words and take things out of context, and I stay quiet for the most part, but I'm not for lying, and when people straight up lie, especially to the public, I have to clear things up, so. I've never once voted against funding our police. I've, every single year voted in favor of it, go check my record. I have gone above and beyond, actually, to propose more tools and technology for our police officers to use. So just wanted to make sure that I clarify that, so people know that, uh, that's a flat-out lie. And unfortunately, it's being used for political electoral purposes, so just wanted to clarify that. Uh, next item, last Friday, we actually attended the Jamil Dada Character Excellence Awards. Uh, that was a really, really nice event, something that he does, Mr. Moreno Valley himself, is his nickname, Jamil Dada. Uh, he does it every single year, and basically, he takes a group of young leaders from the Youth Opportunity Centers across Riverside County, um, to a trip to Washington DC. Uh, basically, you know, to give them that opportunity to, you know, interact with our, with our congressional legislators and with our Pentagon leaders. Uh, Jamil Dada is a staple and, uh, really part of the foundation of Moreno Valley and this entire region. And he was someone that, you know, I have really, uh, looked up to, uh, during my time on the council as well. So that was a really, really nice event, and we also had a chance to listen to, uh, retired, uh, General as well. Uh, she had a beautiful story to, to share, Mary Ann, I forget her last name, but, uh, I believe at one time she was the only active four-star, uh, General, um, uh, serving in the, in the military. So that was a really, really nice keynote speech to listen to. Next item, last week, uh, the Building Industry Association put on an event in Temecula. And, um, I had the, uh, the pleasure to attend that event, and, uh, during the event, I, I don't know how they made this happen, but, um, they actually had Magic Johnson come out for the keynote speech. And I just so happened to be, you know, a basketball fan, and I was not expecting that, but, you know, when they called him up to the stage and, um, just to see someone like him, who, you know, he owns the Dodgers, and he owns the LA Sparks, and he used to own the Lakers, right? Someone so accomplished, and he shared his story about where he came from and how he got to be where he is today. And he's just a very humble person. And what I took away from that the most was how he wants to add value to everybody else around him, you know, it's not about himself. And everybody just wants to be around him, right? So, um, just want to thank the BIA for that opportunity as well. Um, the League of Cities, I won't say too much more than has already been said, but, um, that went very, very well, actually. I'm a member of the Latino Caucus for the League of California Cities, and I'm, I'm honored, um, to now be on the Executive Board for the Latino Caucus for the League of Cities. Um, my colleagues entrusted me with that, they elected me, uh, to be, uh, on the Executive Board, so it's, it's an honor to represent not only Moreno Valley, but Latinos as well across the state. Um, so I appreciate that from my Latino Caucus colleagues. Um, the Mobile Safer Program for the free smoke detectors, City Manager shared that already, but if you haven't heard about that, the city is giving away free smoke detectors. Uh, so please fill out the application, make sure you send it out here to the city, and come and pick it up here at City Hall. And finally, I'll close with, um, actually this week, uh, and sometimes I like to share, uh, a little bit of personal things, but, um, I'll be, my, my wife and I will soon be, um, welcoming in our first baby, uh, baby boy. Uh, so that should happen any minute now, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Um, and so, just wanted to share that, so I'll make sure to take a lot of pictures and, and share those when the time comes. So with that, have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember. So just for my closing comments, uh, this evening, um, as you know, um, we didn't have a, a fourth, uh, meeting, actually, uh, last month, uh, but we were able to celebrate, uh, the dedication of Weston Park. And that's when we actually had, uh, Kawhi Leonard himself, uh, he came, uh, to the city of Moreno Valley. Uh, this was a program that I've been working, uh, actually an initiative with him, several initiatives from the backpack giveaway, the shoe giveaway with his sister, uh, actually, more than a year and a half in the making. Uh, so I was really happy to see that, uh, he was there to dedicate that park, uh, which they never had a basketball court actually there. Um, it was attended by a lot of people, we couldn't actually tell a lot of folks about it because, uh, they did ask for, uh, a media blackout, uh, meaning that we couldn't, uh, say anything until that, the day of. And so we did have to be respectful of that for security reasons. Um, I was, it, really amazed, uh, of the youth, uh, that attended, uh, the Youth Opportunity Center, actually, uh, Jamil Dada event. Uh, it was just great to see all of their stories, uh, to hear the story from the four-star general, that was amazing as well. Um, want to share that, just actually yesterday, uh, we had, uh, the mayor's golf cup, uh, tournament. So this was a one-of-a-kind tournament where we competed with eighteen other cities in Western Riverside County. And it's pretty, this, you're gonna laugh, but, so of the eighteen cities, Moreno Valley was first place. And it was pretty nice, it was really, really nice. Now, for me, as mayor, it was pretty awkward because, you know, we're the host city, and here I got to announce that we're the first place and accept the trophy, so it was kind of a little awkward because everybody was like, what? What's going on there? But Paris was, uh, second place, and then Hemet was, uh, third place. But we had so many folks from all over the region there, um, and it was just really nice to highlight our PGA Tour, uh, golf course, uh, that we have here, which back in nineteen ninety-eight was a, uh, sponsored by Nike as well. So that was really, really nice. Um, today, actually, I was able to tour the US Vets Facility, and I was able to meet and welcome, uh, the Secretary of Veteran Affairs, who's a cabinet-level, uh, member, uh, with President Joe Biden, uh, Dennis McDonough. We welcomed him here to the city at the US Vets, um, and it was a great opportunity to speak with him and tell him about, uh, our veterans and the veteran services that, that we offer here, like the Hire a Vet Program that Dr. Thornton, uh, championed, and we're gonna continue to do. Um, he was really excited about that, and we told him about the ESG, uh, funding that, uh, we provide to US vets. And he was really excited about that as well. Uh, so that was a great, great, um, event. Uh, that was something I couldn't really publicize, uh, days before, because also for security reasons, um, they didn't allow us to do that. Uh, but, but it was a great, great event, um, and that's why I barely got here at five-thirty, um, so it was a great event. Um, Dia de los Muertos, Day of the Dead, is coming up, and that's going to be October twenty-ninth. And this is a really, really fun event, not only for families to kind of get together and have fun, because there's gonna be live music, but it's also, uh, a strong meaning to it too, it's the ofrendas too. So it's, there's gonna be different, uh, family members can set up, uh, different ofrendas and different, uh, booths. And they can put, um, uh, pictures of their loved ones, uh, that passed away. Uh, so this is really an opportunity, and then you, as, as members of the public, can walk around and learn about the stories, the lived experiences of all of these people, uh, that passed away, because they touched someone's life. And so, um, it's a really special, uh, day to, if you've never experienced Day of the Dead or Dia de los Muertos event, like in LA or in other places, um, it's really nice to have over here, because it really puts a whole bunch of people together, a, a sense of community. So that's gonna be October twenty-ninth here at the amphitheater at six PM. So please invite your family, there's gonna be music, food, vendors. And, uh, again, there's gonna be an opportunity for you to either showcase your loved one and their, um, you know, and, you know, their experiences and what they went through in life, or to learn about other ones as well. Uh, with that, I'll go ahead and, uh, close the meeting at six, is it six o'clock? Yeah, six, uh, forty, six thirty-nine PM. That clock is dead.